Meeting of the Perry Township Board of Trustees for July 13, 2021 at 7:00 PM. As we return back in person. If everyone could stand.
I want to introduce you to the United States of America. The Republic, which stands for one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Wayne?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mayor?
Yes.
Just a couple of quick housekeeping items before we get started with our first meeting back. We are being recorded on Zoom. We are also available by phone in and we are obviously live. Welcome back to everybody. We're going to ask any questions that aren't addressed during our business conducting be held until the end. And if anyone has signed up or requested, just let us know. If you have something to ask during a topic, we welcome that within certain limitations. Because it's our first meeting back and there's a lot to talk about. In accordance with Ohio Revised Code 3335-1-01F, Robert's Rules of Order states that we can have a temporary sergeant-at-arms appointed for any meetings. So I've asked Sergeant Wayne Meyer to be our sergeant-at-arms for the evening, just in case we need one. Will you accept that role? Yeah, thank you. Okay. And with that, we will move on to our consent agenda of a whole bunch of minutes. Do we have a motion to accept minutes from special meeting June 4th, work session June 5th, trustees meeting June 8th, special meetings June 11th and 22nd? Those are the same? We're going to do that, okay. Then the bills also from June 1st to the 30th? With the electronic warrants 91, 2021 through 124, are those transactions?
Those are electronic.
Electronic, okay. And the checks that were dispersed were 36,257 through 36,341?
One second.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Wayne?
Yes.
Trustee Mayor?
Yes.
Our fiscal officer report.
For our June 22nd, 2021 special meeting, wanted to update you, let me know the police payment to the US Bancorp for the coding copier has been reallocated to the 50% police, 25% general and 25% trash and refuge. Given the new allocation, there should be sufficient funds to complete the remaining payments for 2021 without requirement of any new warrants unless we incur any over dues for use. The next area that we have to focus on, it was discovered when I was working with the traveling clerk that there were some issues with regards to the UAN fees, which resulted in a new warrant being required to pay the UAN fees for the June and the remainder of 2021. Our quarterly UAN fees are $762 for a total annual cost of $3,048. On January 6th of 2021, free purchase orders were established to cover the cost of $3,048. However, on February 28th, 2021, there was a payment of $1,524 that was issued to cover the cost of billings that were not paid in 2020. Due to this large payment, the purchase orders issued on January 6th were insufficient to cover the 2021 fees. So a reallocation was required and new POs have been established to cover the remaining $1,104 for 2021. Work with the traveling clerk has been completed. Overall cost to the township for its repair services was $1,545. We contracted for up to $2,400. So we were able to complete the additional support at $855 under budget. So that saved us a little bit there. And then the final thing that I have is requesting approval of Resolution 2153 for submittal to the Montgomery County Board of Elections pertaining to the additional 2.5 mil fire slash EMS levy to be placed on the November 2nd, 2021 general election ballot. Resolution 2153 states placement of a continuous 2.5 mil additional levy for fire and EMS capital improvement needs for Perry Township. Whereas this Board of Perry Township Trustees has determined the necessity of levying a tax outside the 10 mil limitation. And whereas the ORC Section 5705.19I authorizes submission of the question of the tax. And whereas the purpose of the proposed tax is for fire and emergency medical services, capital improvement needs and is in addition to the current 2.5 mil continuous levy currently in effect, commencing tax year 2021, first due in calendar year 2022 for a period of continuous. And whereas the Board of Elections is authorized to place this levy on the ballot for the November 2nd, 2021 general election. And whereas the continueness of this levy is essential and necessary for the continuation of fire and EMS services to the citizens of Perry Township and the general public. Whereas the Montgomery County Auditor has certified the tax valuation of Perry Township. And now let it be resolved, the Perry Township Fiscal Officer is in receipt of the county auditor certificate and the fiscal officer is forwarding this resolution and certificate to Montgomery County Board of Elections ordering a placement of an additional continuous 2.5 mil fire and EMS capital improvement levy on the general election ballot on November 2nd, 2021 for fire and EMS services for Perry Township.
I'll make a motion that we accept the resolution and place the fire and EMS levy on the November 2nd, 2021 ballot.
Second.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Wayne?
Yes.
Trustee Mayor?
Yes.
Caleb, welcome to your first meeting.
Thanks.
Road and cemetery report for us?
Oh, yeah. It's kind of short to sweet for the moment, this first one. Cemetery Department has had one burial, one cremation this month, bringing our total 15 burials this year. For roads, we have a water issue on Sheep Road. And we've met with Walder, the county engineer's office. We're going to dig up the side of the road where the washout had occurred. We're going to see if it's a coupler, if that has come apart, right, or the pipe has been crushed. We're going from there to fix the current issue. We may have to look into redoing the pipe to be more aligned with the flow of the water from the waterway into the creek on the other side. And we just finished our first round of roadside mowing. It was completed this morning. We pulled away $1,277 worth of scrap metal from the maintenance building. For our equipment, we just had to get the John Deere mower worked on. We had to have the starter replaced and fuel lines replaced. We just got the roadside mower back from getting a hydraulic pump replaced. After I tight this up, we stopped and got the one-time dump. We ran a Skins tool on it, valve body stuck. And in that second gear, everyone's valve kicked from second to fourth. That's the cost of $2,000 to replace the valve body. If we go that route, they also went $4,000 to reman transmission. That may get us by getting that with water cooler and new seat. That might get us by for a few years until we can get the budget for the one-time dump. Later down, maybe if we wanted one now, we probably cannot get one.
The point of the question for everything?
Yes, he's going to work on quotes. He's got to get some calls in and he's waiting on them to get back to get exactly what you both gave away.
And who was that quote from?
CDC's there in Perry Township. And then moving forward, we have a tile project coming up at the end of July on Handy Road. We're going to continue assessing cemeteries, the equipment, railways now and continue with the shop cleanup that remains.
Has anyone said anything to you about the flooding on Keener?
No.
There's a couple of roads that when they were covered over, the drainage ditches were covered over. So I've got a couple of those, I'll get with you and let you know. Thank you. Chief Little?
June stats are published onto our website. Reminder to everybody, our fishing derby is Sunday, August the 22nd from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM at the Overlook Park there on Providence. After our meeting last month, talking about the body worn cameras and upgrading the in-car cameras, I got with charity. We sat down, reviewed the budget and the money is in the budget for going with the WatchGuard 4RE in-car cameras, the automatic upload and the body worn cameras from WatchGuard. So that is in the budget to go ahead and to forward with if that's something that I can get approval on from the board.
Those sync together, right?
Yes. What was the overall cost of that? So the Wi-Fi KMP setup is $4,750. The yearly fee for that for five years is $9,072 yearly. Which gives you a total of $45,360.
$45,460?
$45,360.
And that's per year, right?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to the purchase of the body and vehicle cameras for the police department at a cost of $45,360 a year.
Trustee Mayor?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Wayne?
Yes.
Car D was placed in GovDeals. Car D is the old expedition that we've had out in the parking lot. So all the equipment's been stripped, the lettering has been removed, so it's on GovDeals. And the auction ends for that on Monday.
Right? Thank you. So I need to...
I have assisted Caleb Coops with their permits and cemetery deeds and updates. The cemetery logs, which is an ongoing thing to be working on. And I came in on Friday, the 9th, and volunteered my time. And I painted the accent wall in the lobby and cleaned up, cleaned the glass and floors. So I did that because it's something that needed to be done and I did it because I wanted to. So that's done.
Good luck, man.
Thank you. The third quarter trash bills were sent out on June 30th, 2021. We had 1,294 trash bills sent out. As of today, we've had 411 residents that have paid their third quarter trash bill. In zoning, since the last Board of Trustee meeting, I have issued seven barn permits. And I have four pending permits, one barn, two single family homes and one shed that I'll be finishing those up here soon. We have a VCA hearing scheduled for July 22nd, 2021 that will be held here at the township at 7:00 PM. And I'm also scheduling a VCA hearing for August 12th that will also be held here at 7:00. And the last thing I have is that I will be scheduling nuisance abatement hearings with the trustees pretty soon. We've got some issues that we need to have addressed. With all I have.
So moving into our trustees reports, starting with mine. I attended the trustees and engineers dinner at the Montgomery County Engineers Club and had a very nice, long conversation with Paul Greuner, who has agreed to look one more time at the intersection of Old Dayton and Rocco Johnsville and see what, if anything, might be done. We talked about ideas of many roundabouts. We talked about tile grading, we talked about all kinds of things. So they're going to give it one more look and see if there's anything else we can do to try to alleviate some of the accidents that are still happening up there. He also offered any assistance that we need. I don't know if he's gotten with you yet, but he was going to reach out and while we're picking up pieces of things, anything that the county engineer's office can help with, they're going to. They're going to be redoing Air Hill Roads Bridge next year as a big project for 2022. And I think it's the one west of Keener. I don't know what the Air Hill Bridge is, but I know I'll only be able to go home in one direction. So it's somewhere in my...
Is that Air Hill, Wolf Creek, Pike and Clayton?
Is that where it is?
It's just the one right there.
Okay, they said it's called the Air Hill Bridge is the name of it, so. But I know there's a couple of different little overpasses, so I'm not sure exactly which one that is. I spent some time working with the road crew again and chopped up trees and helped clean up messes from some storms. And I've done a couple more classes through the Ohio Township Association and will continue to do that. They're going to continue to do webinars and in-person classes and hopefully get back to the in-person conference next year as a goal. So that is what I have on my report.
All right. Township website, social media and general information technology updates. Continuing to update the website, Facebook page and scanning and documentation that get available for residents on website. I've been investigating the cost of information technology improvements for the township to include a meeting camera, meeting room camera and fixed microphones for the township meeting room. I requested estimates from two companies. One company did not respond, so I'm waiting on a replacement estimate at this time from a company that came well referred from other townships south of us. I received two estimates for hosting and website development. And Ms. Kayler has distributed that to the trustees. I'd like to set that up for the end of the month work session, kind of dig into those a little bit and talk about those. And I collected the specs for two PCs and one printer to cover the maintenance garage office and work area. Chief Littleton has amended that to his submission for the firehouse grant. And I am going to be reviewing the estimates that he got back from Dell here this week.
Can we change the date of the work session?
Yeah.
We can talk about that later or whenever because that Tuesday night is a conflict with schools.
Okay. Not a problem.
Okay.
Maintenance garage, I met with Mr. Hootup, the garage, to review the maintenance garage needs. I'm looking into a new phone setup to cover both the back office and each one of the bays with a wireless phone setup. Discuss the need for ventilation to improve the airflow out there. He's going to be looking into what the part of the possible is and then bringing something to us for us to discuss and see what we can do. And for the roads and cemeteries, I've continued my weekly inspections of the roads and cemeteries as well as nuisance properties for zoning and nature. I looked into and researched the use of each House Bill 110 funds for police use. I think I sent you that email. That may provide some funding for some of the stuff that we need. We'll have to get down into that a little bit deeper. And I also did research into the American Rescue Plan Funds for the townships and forwarded that information to Ms. Kayler to be distributed to the other trustees so that we can have a discussion here in the near future. And that is all that I have.
Okay, let's see. I helped with cleanup after one of the storms and then I helped at the maintenance garage to fix a foundation with spectrum. I've been helping Ms. Kayler with some of the trash bills. I've been here at the township, I've been pulling some weeds and things like that. And been in contact with State Representative Robbie Creach. And he also gave me the information on this art, which I distributed tonight. Working with, I was working with Ms. Kayler on the possibility of getting a dumpster for used tires over there. And let's see. Chief Littleton and myself went to a council meeting in New Leaven. And also I would like to thank Ms. Kayler for painting a red building. And also thanks to Chief Littleton and his officers for their assistance with the barrel of the out-of-state police officer. That was very helpful, I appreciate it.
Yes.
So we have new business listed next. However, as a point of order, old business usually is supposed to go first. At least according to Robert's Rules, it says that old business goes first. So that being said, Missy, do you have any new information on the Wolf Creek watershed?
No, I have not heard a word.
Okay.
No. And Jerry, I need to get with you and see if there's any files or anything. Maybe you may have something in there.
Oh, is that in there or is this Wolf Creek?
Okay.
I haven't got to that yet.
Okay, I'll come down if you need my...
Because I'm under the impression that was supposed to be starting, but I think they postponed it again.
They postponed it a couple of times, yeah.
Okay. The other thing in old business is the retreat program is coming up and there's some flyers sitting up there. If anyone needs a tree replaced from the tornado or if anybody wants to volunteer to help plant the trees, Brookville, Clayton, Perry Township and Trotwood are all going to be doing their tree planting on September 25th. There's going to be like a kickoff at Sigmore Park where all of the volunteers will be given whatever tools they need, instructions on how to plant the trees and the trees. They'll be given the addresses and then any trees that are not planted or if they don't finish up on the 25th, the plan is to regroup on the 26th and do that. And whenever that's done, they're supposed to be gathering again for some little yay, we did it celebratory thing. That location hasn't been announced yet, but as soon as we get times and everything set in stone, then we'll have that information to share hopefully by the next meeting. That was...
I have two other questions.
Yeah.
The, has there been any movement on the archway? It wasn't held, not with anyone on that yet. That's still...
Yeah, it's still...
I figured I wanted to give Caleb a little time, but I wasn't sure on the transition. Yeah, we just talked about it on Monday. Maybe we're looking at it. Try to get some ideas going on that. Okay. Excellent. And the last thing that I had was the guy from Liberty Mutual, very persistent in calling. Do we have an opinion on whether or not we have a need for that?
I don't think we have a need. I mean, nobody has really jumped up and shown any interest and...
We've given it plenty of time and no one spoke up, so. I'll just let him know that there's no interest at this time. That's all I have.
Did we return that money for the grant?
We did. Actually, I got the letter last week and I put it on charity's desk so she would have it for that.
Then moving on, do you guys have anything for new business?
Do you want to jump into the ARP you got from Mr. Creach?
Yeah, well...
This is going to be a longer conversation than tonight, but just to...
I have some quick new businesses, but I want to do this first.
We want to table, we can table this until the work section at the end of the hour.
Yeah, that's fine, because this is just, you know...
We're still ingesting a lot of information from the Treasury.
Basically, we are going to be receiving some money from the American Rescue Plan Act. And what had happened with that is it was originally designated throughout the entire state of Ohio. When the verbiage was written, they didn't include townships among the cities and villages and other municipalities that were mentioned. So there was a big legislative movement. OTA started a big campaign to include the townships. As of last week, we performed very recently, townships were included and we will be receiving a chunk of money. So...
So there's two tranches that we could get. I think the first tranche is like around $157,000 and the second tranche is like $130,000 something.
It's a total of three...
357 or something.
Yeah. So...
But there are strict guidelines.
There are, just like there's...
There are very strict guidelines as to what we can or can't use it for. There are a lot of strings attached as usual, but this will be a good thing. And this time, we're not going to sit on it and let it slip away. We're going to follow up on it and pursue it.
And the Ohio Treasurer's Office is offering to help anyone who needs help with the registration through the portal, walking through the steps that they've laid out for how to register on the portal and put in for the fund. So there is more help this time too. It's not just you're left to your own devices and they ended up waving a bunch of stuff that they required. So we will be looking into that and that will be something that here in the next couple of weeks. Because I think the deadline for that is, let's see, it's in the early fall. The first trial.
I don't remember the first, yeah.
Right.
The first one, I don't remember what it was, but I know it's... We have to be for next month at least show that we are going to follow along on it. Like show our intent, yeah, like December 31st. From Lieutenant Dickson, Dr. Morgan and his colleagues.
That'll be coming up.
I know the dates are in emails from the OTA.
Right.
I think we've got all the breakdown of that. So that was very good news. So how many other new businesses? Okay, the only other thing I wanted to bring up in new business is there had been a lot of conversation lately around the township regarding whoever is making big booms at 9:30, 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock at night. Chief Littleton is now aware of it. That has led to some questions about gun ranges in town. Just to clarify, I know of three NRA inspected and certified gun ranges, one of which is also a USCCA gun range. And there are four or five qualified instructors that live within our township that have their own ranges. It's permissible to do that. So I know there were some comments about the last administration, the previous administration, this, that. Doesn't matter who gave them permission, it's okay to do. So the gun ranges are there. The big booms at night, however, if anyone has any information on who's doing that, there are a lot of upset parents, a lot of unhappy pet owners. 10 o'clock, last night it was at 11 o'clock. We narrowed it down to a couple of areas. One person, and I forgot to tell you this, actually lives on the other side of Diamond Mill. So it's not even Perry Township. But you know, they've been setting off. There may be a couple of people that are doing it. It's a trend that's starting. So it's not okay to do that. The amount of explosive is not legal and it's what we're looking into. But as far as the questions on the gun ranges, they are illegal, they are permissible and you can shoot in the township. Just common sense dictates you don't do it after 9 or 10 o'clock. Just common sense dictates you don't do it after nine or 10 o'clock. So at this time, is there anything that anyone would like to bring up or discuss?
I had a question. You talked about returning grant money, what grant money was that?
That was the grant, we got a thousand dollars from the state and we were going to paint the arch at Pleasant Health Cemetery. But upon inspection, it was seen to be a, uh, a safety hazard and the arch actually.
The only thing it could be used for was to paint the arch?
That's all we could use. It was specifically a cemetery brand, it was only a thousand dollars and we were going to be doing a lot of in-kind work with it. But after we had, uh, I think it was like three, three or four masons look at it, they said, you don't want to paint this because it's crumbling apart. So that's why we're looking into what we're going to do with both the arch and the fence way there at Brookville.
The other question I had was, what happened about the FEMA money from the tornado? I spent an extensive amount of time when I was trustee applying for that, sending that all in. Had various people review it, said it all looked good. We had done it in the past on some snowstorms, I believe the windstorm called Ike or something in 2013. We received considerable amount of FEMA money, whatever happened with that?
It went to the city of Brookville.
So we didn't get it from them?
We got it in service as opposed to in refund or rebate.
What amount was it?
I don't know. We have gas on and heating about that.
And we didn't request that money back from Brookville?
It was, the way the paperwork was filed, we've been told that it was not ours to request. Um, there were some questions with the way the financial document and none of us were in office at that time, so we don't have that information.
At what time?
When the paperwork was filed. So.
When the payment come through, you were in office.
The payment didn't come through though, it didn't come to us.
Well, you should have been finding out why.
We were told because of the way the paperwork was filed during the application time.
It was all done wrong.
The Emergency Operations Center didn't have Perry Township on their list at all.
Oh, yes it did.
I, I.
I beg to differ with you, it did because I was there, I applied for it, I passed the information in absolutely. And we had done it in the past and we were successful at receiving FEMA money for snowstorms and windstorms. So we were accurate in what we were doing, but I'd like to know what happened to that money. If the IRS gave my neighbor a check and said, oh, well, we gave it to the neighbor, I'd be going and saying, well, I want my check. I think somebody as trustees ought to follow up on that and see where our money's at.
There's a lot of money that's missing that we're looking for right now. We don't have our previous fiscal officer getting the mask. So that is also, there's quite a bit that's being looked for.
You know, that was quite a bit of money there that we should have been receiving in this township or our community.
Well, um, I've been working with the tornado recovery center, which is also handling this retreat thing. And the Emergency Operations Center in Montgomery County did not have us on the list and I.
No, it was FEMA, it wasn't the emergency operations.
No, I understand, but they were working together, FEMA got their statistical numbers.
See, there's where you're wrong right there. You were, you're working with the wrong agency.
No, I've worked with FEMA also, I have spoken with them.
Well, you didn't get the money, so you weren't doing something right.
We weren't the ones that didn't do it right.
Oh, yeah, no, we did it right. We did it right.
Here's the thing.
No, I'm not going to settle down because I'm.
I didn't say settle down, I said time out for now.
I'm asking this.
Here's the thing.
Are you a trustee, are you a trustee, I'm asking the trustee.
You need to be quiet or you're going to be escorted out. Let me answer your question.
I don't.
The state of Ohio, you don't give a shit?
No, I didn't say that. I said, I don't think you know the answer, you're not trustee, you're the ones that need to answer.
There's a lot of things that you don't know.
I'm asking, I know, that's what I'm asking.
She doesn't know either because she's not, doesn't have the information.
I'm trying to explain, so I do.
Here's the thing, we have a lot of money's missing.
Really?
The state of Ohio Special Investigative Unit has all of the financial records. Anything that is traced back, good, bad, indifferent is going to be reported. Anybody that can be held accountable, if there is anybody to be held accountable for anything, will be charged. That goes to trustees also. We have no control over the investigation.
Charged for what?
You just heard me, I'm not repeating myself.
I didn't, I didn't understand you though, that's why I'm asking.
Investigative units finish with their investigation into all of the financial documents and records, everything will be made public. We have no control over that investigation. We've served three search warrants. They've all been sealed.
Okay.
Everything has been turned over to the Special Investigative Unit. If you call and ask them, they will not confirm or deny if there's an investigation. So I'm just confirming them right off the bat, there is one. And right now we have over two and a quarter million dollars missing. So.
It's possible.
Anything that was or wasn't, is going to be reported.
It's an allegation.
I'm not alleging anything.
There you are.
Saying this.
It's an allegation.
Who did I allege?
You're saying it's missing, you don't know for a fact it's missing, you think it's missing, so it's an allegation at that point.
It cannot be accounted for, therefore it's missing.
It's an allegation, maybe it's misunderstanding.
Could be one of those.
That's right. So it's an allegation.
I'm not alleging anybody did anything. I said whether it can be proof or not proof, I don't care.
I don't either.
I just want to put things to rest, which is why the Special Investigative Unit is doing the investigation. We will specifically look for the money that you're talking about.
That'd be good.
If they can find it, we will get you the answer. But a lot of the stuff, we don't even have the documents for because they took them. That's the best answer we can give them. The state of Ohio Special Investigative Unit.
Okay.
I've said that three times.
Well, you said it, but I don't know if that's what you're referring to each time, that's what you said.
That's what I'm saying, each time, they have all the financial information.
Okay.
We don't, they do.
They don't have, well, they have the records of what should be the financial information.
They have everything that Ronda left us, let's just be blunt and put it that way.
Okay. That should be all the records of all the information.
Not necessarily, because we'll just be blunt about this, Dale, we've got it on video shredding a whole bag of records.
Okay.
So you want to see it, we'll show it to you.
You, you got her shredding, but that don't mean it's records.
No, they're records, she acknowledged that. So you don't know what I have done and have done.
You don't know what I know and what I don't either.
Maybe I need to subpoena you.
Could be, could be.
So, but remember, everything goes out publicly.
That's right. There's been a whole lot of things that have gone on that should have been checked out a lot of times that worked. Not everybody knows about that they ought to know about.
Was anything ever brought forward to us? No.
Yeah, some of the stuff you were involved in and that, and, and, yes, absolutely, absolutely.
You say so.
Yep, I do say so, absolutely.
Okay.
And if I knew the right agency, believe me, they would, it would be forwarded to them, absolutely. So maybe, maybe the state agency ought to talk to me, maybe I could give them some information.
The last warning I'm giving you.
Last warning, I'm.
We're done.
You don't like to hear what I'm saying. Okay. Don't like to hear what I'm saying.
One more, Dale.
Anybody else have anything?
I have a question, um, I. Are the, I'm, I'm, um, in, in, and the fiscal officers report the date for the bills that we haven't paid. What, how did that happen? I'm, I'm very confused. Um, I'm not sure, all I know is that in the discovery with working with the traveling clerk, when we went in to pay like the UAN fees, we looked at 2020 records and it looks, it appears that according to the UAN records as well, we only made one quarterly payment last year. The rest of it wasn't paid actually until February of this year. So it kind of threw off some stuff with the appropriations because when the appropriations were done in January, they appropriated for the whole year's worth of fees, not taking into account that the 2020 were still outstanding. So we had to reissue new POs to ensure that we had enough funding to cover the UAN fees throughout 2021.
So you issued new POs?
We had to issue new POs because the POs that were in place were not sufficient to cover the costs.
Yeah, I have several questions. So in this missing funds that you're talking about, would the auditor that was assigned to the auditing of this township, would he also be under potential indictment for this thing? I mean, we had state auditors here that went through those books.
Chair, can you answer the questions better about the audits that we're doing? Because that, I know there's two different types. What we're having done on is a forensic audit. That's where they literally look at everything. Bank records, personal bank records, I mean, they, they go through everything. So it gives a flat grade now for everything that was spent. It accounts for every check written, I mean, essentially any township money spent, where they can track to, what they can't track to, that's what the forensic audit does. As far as the other audit, that I can't answer because I don't know what they did.
But it's going to be very thorough. That's what I'm hoping for.
They've had it for over, my goal is this, I want all rumors, questions and everything put to rest.
Well, then we always shut down Facebook, you know?
Well, I can't do that, but I mean, no matter where it leads.
Because that's where a lot of crap is coming.
I hope it shows that it was just put in the wrong column and that everything was there. I don't know, I'm not asking them because they won't tell us until anything, until everything is done.
I understand.
So that's why we turned it over to the state and gave it to people that knew what they were doing and what to report. We had absolutely nothing in the investigating part.
I'm, I'm not on Facebook, but it's been told to me that it said that things have been messed up in this township for 30 years. And the people that are saying that have been lived in the township for 30 years. So I'm wondering how that balances out, where that comes from, and is there just a liar in the place or what?
What are they looking back at?
Yeah, well, I have no idea, I didn't interfere that long. I came to this community because I love this community.
They're, they're only looking back as far as what they can go, must be honest, after 30 years, you can't do anything.
Right, but I mean, why would anybody indict a township for the last 30 years when you've only lived here seven or eight?
I don't know, you would have to ask whoever said that.
Well, I don't have Facebook, I don't know who said it, you know?
Neither do I, so, I mean, I've got it, but I don't know who said it.
Okay, that's, then I have another question, there was a mention of the police buying some coins. Do you know anything about that and what are they for?
The challenge coins?
I don't know what the hell they are, they're just coins. That's to the tune of $4,500 or something, what are they for and what are you doing with them?
Well, it wasn't just coins that were purchased. We had purchased, um, some ornaments as well. Uh, that's used as part of a public relations that we did with our department events. And it's something that's handed out to officers for doing things beyond the call of duty with some things. Um, and it's also out there that people who like to collect, uh, coins, they can purchase a coin. The cost of the coin is $10, it covers the cost of the coin and shipping if it needs to be shipped.
Because it says on the coin, the way I understand it, a hundred years of policing and there hasn't even been a police force in very township for a hundred years. So they're incorrect, but anyway, it's neither here nor there. I, uh, I want to ask also about police protection as far as visibility. We seldom see any patrolling done on Little Ridge, very seldom. If it's once a week, it's a lot. And I'm wondering why that is. And when the cars do go by, they've got all these lights on. I, I don't know where the lights are located on the car, but they shine. You know, if anybody was doing anything wrong, they'd get the hell off the road or get away or whatever because, you know, here comes this car with all these lights on it. And I don't know what that's all about and why we don't have more patrolling on the roads. I don't, I seldom see a cruiser out doing patrol. And it seems like if I want to see a police cruiser, I need to go to New Leaven or Brookville. And I'll see one of our cruisers there. I'm wondering why that is, why we don't have more patrolling of our area.
Is that all your questions? I don't want to be rude and interrupt.
But, yeah, that's the.
So I can tell you that the officers, uh, do in fact patrol Perry Township quite heavily. That on average, uh, each cruiser is driven over a hundred miles, um, per shift. Uh, we have 122 miles of roadway. Now, sometimes it's, there are more miles that are patrolled because of the call for services are down that day, meaning nobody's calling 911 for assistance. So they're out making traffic stops, uh, and everything else. And there are some days that the guys go from call to call to call, that they don't have the necessary time to drive up and down each road for visibility because somebody on this side of the township needs assistance, somebody on this side of the township needs assistance. Uh, things are happening in Brookville where their officer needs assistance, or there's things happening in New Lebanon where those officers need assistance.
I understand that, you know, there's more patrolling than just going up and down out of road. One of the things, another thing that I wanted to ask about, this has been, I don't know, probably two years ago. I had a four wheeler stolen, I talked to you about that. I said, I don't have the information gathered yet, I don't have the serial number, the title, the, and I had pictures of it. I said, let me get that together and you said, I'll have a man out to take a report on that. And I said, okay. I said, when I get all that stuff together, I'll call you, you know, and I did that. And it's still laying on my desk and I have never had anybody yet come out to take a report on a stolen four wheeler. And I'm kind of throwing my hands up on the thing because I'm really kind of disappointed in what's going on with the cop shop and our police department. And, uh, to this day, I hear about, well, what are you doing? We're out here checking at pawn shops and what have you, well, what the hell are you looking for if you're not even knowing what has been stolen? And here, you know, my four wheeler's never been investigated, never had a report on it, nothing. I don't know why that is.
According to the conversation, you're right, we had a phone conversation, you didn't have all the stuff gathered.
Right.
And I said, I can send somebody out there and you said, well, Tim, I don't have all the, the stuff as of yet. I said, okay, well, let me tell you what, mom, you get all the stuff together, get your title, get your van and stuff like that. And you let me know and I'll send somebody out. I never got a phone call back, sir. And here's the thing, you don't have to call me directly, we have this thing called a dispatch center.
That's what I call it.
You can call there and let them know what you need.
I did.
And they will send an officer.
I did do that and I left the message that I had talked to you about it.
You know when you called?
It was like two days later. Cause I went through my files, I got everything, all the information there and I called and told them, I got no response, none.
Well, I'll put a request into Montgomery County Regional Dispatch. I'll need to narrow down that date and I will have them pull their phone records and call logs, the season would call in.
That's right.
And then if you did, then I'll get to the bottom of why somebody didn't come out.
Well, I'm giving you notice right now, I have that information for you.
Okay.
At this late date. So maybe we can just get somebody out there and check it out, you know, and get a report on it.
That would be good.
I think that's all I got for right now.
Well, I don't mean to interrupt again, but while you're on the dispatch thing, are, is there a problem without that? Cause I, I, we had an accident about a year ago and it took us 45 minutes to get anybody out there. And it's not, I'm not saying it's the township's fault here, but it's through dispatch, it was awful. Thank God this guy wasn't hurt bad, or I'd have had to do what I could do. I mean, we just couldn't get anybody, it took 45 minutes. We finally got Poreble County 911 and it's like, I, I, I don't know if you're hearing that or not, but something, it's a problem, I'm not the only one to say.
It is a problem.
I, I have heard that issue, um, and I am working with, um, two people or two agencies. The Inglewood Dispatch Center. I'm looking to get information from, from there to how much it would be for police dispatching, um, New Lebanon dispatches through Inglewood, Brookville, so we know that the township's divided up between those two. And the E911 system does differentiate if you're Perry Township. It needs to go to Montgomery County or New Lebanon or Brookville, you need to go to Inglewood. So when you call, no matter where you're at in the township, it takes you straight to the Inglewood Dispatch Center. Then from there, they do one or two things. One, they can either transfer your call directly to Montgomery County or they take the information, they hang up the phone with you and then they call Montgomery County. Montgomery County and give them that information. So there is a big time lapse.
There is a big time.
And when I say a big time lapse, from what I have seen, anywhere between three to six minutes from the time that you call 911 and it goes to Inglewood, by the time they get that information, transfer it down to Montgomery County, and then we're dispatched. That's crucial time depending on what type of call is coming in.
This is why, Tim, you said you were going to check the records with the dispatch. That's all well and good, but I don't trust what you find. I just don't trust it because I guarantee you, and I had an episode with 911. There was a, well, that's another deal. You know, this, this follow-up thing, like my neighbor down there had a theft. The police showed up and left. They didn't ask the neighbors if they saw anything. They didn't ask them if they had any identification of the vehicle. Here was a man right straight across the road from this house that got burglarized that had the make of the truck, the taillight that was out, the guy's description that was in the truck that stole the tools right across the road. And the police didn't come over and ask them if they saw it. What kind of police work is that? I mean, I don't, I don't want to be the top complainer here. But damn it, I lived in this community and I want the protection that I'm paying. And, and to me, it's negligent on the police department's part not to go ahead and try to investigate thoroughly by asking the neighbors, did you see anything? Have you got any information that would be beneficial? I have no doubt if you had the make of the truck, they had everything except the license note, a taillight out. That's a dead giveaway, you know? And there's been some, I'm not going to go into that. Anyway, I just feel like that there should be some shaping up a little bit of what's going on in the police department. I mean.
Let me, let me finish the dispatch situation. Okay?
That's important there because you were at the one and I had called because the forklift fell on the guy. And I will say that day, we had fast response. Thank God we had fast response because that was a bad situation.
And.
But I, I don't know what differs. Sometimes it's good, sometimes it's awful. That's what needs to be looked at.
And I agree with you there. So Perry Township pays they've got appropriate, I don't know if you know, I think it's like $40,000 a year for dispatch services. And if, as a citizen, if, if I'm, if I'm paying into this and I know that the department or the township is paying $40,000 a year for a dispatch, I shouldn't have a three to six minute delay of being transferred and information gathered and then someone's finally dispatched. That's, that's not good service from a business standpoint. So digging in and getting with Inglewood, there's about a 50% cost savings with going to Inglewood Dispatch. I've been told that we have a contract with Montgomery County with the Regional Dispatch. It took some time, but I finally tracked down that contract. The contract is very vague. And what amount is to be paid for how long and what the conditions are of coming out of that contract, with the exception of one thing, and that's you have to give a one-year notice. Okay, so I'm still doing, I'm still doing the, the research on this, but I've spoken to some of the trustees that, you know, once I get hard numbers in writing from Inglewood of what it would cost to change over. And while I'm talking about changing over, we don't need new radios. It's just a reprogramming of the radios that we have to point the IP address to look somewhere else and not at Montgomery County. So I need that cost. That will come from P and R, where new services are used. But I have to get hard numbers from Inglewood, you know, how much do they charge per dispatch? Is it $8? Is it $9? Is it 1250? And I have to compare that to what Montgomery County charges us. But right now, based upon our call volume of 2,500 calls per year, I was giving a rough number of $20,000 to $22,000 a year. That's almost a 50% savings. If that is in fact true, it is a no brainer that we switch over to Inglewood. From a business standpoint of saving money that I can use somewhere else in the budget, but also it gives the residents of the township a better police service of getting somebody at your house sooner rather than later. Now, there are some extenuating circumstances that come into play. You know, you talk about patrol. I have 24-hour coverage, seven days a week. Five days out of those seven, I run two cars per shift. Okay? So for two days, there's a single car per shift. I can't go any further than that with the, the current budget that is given. And here's what I mean by that. So the last levy that was passed, and I'm sorry if I'm stepping all over your toes. The last levy that was passed, I don't know how that number came about. Okay? But there was a number that was put out there. I don't think, and I'm not pointing fingers, I'm not looking to point white. These are simple facts. Nothing was calculated, in my opinion, of how much it costs to hire somebody. I have that cost breakdown and I'll be more than happy to get it out. But by the time that I paid an officer to sit down to do testing, to do a background, to do interviews, and do all these things, that adds up. There is that cost. There is the cost of uniforms. There is that cost. The cost for fuel, the cost for all the bills here that are split from the police department. And I'm not complaining about splitting those bills. We use the building and everything else too. But not everything else being was taken into consideration. So to get two more people on the road full-time with benefits, paying uniforms, paying the training, and maintaining the equipment, that costs extra money. I don't have that right now. It's not in the budget, no matter which way I try to slice it. I could reduce dispatches. I could reduce this. I could reduce that. I can apply for grades. I could do all these things. But at the end of the day, it doesn't replace and keep those two individuals there as a second car for those two days, 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
I understand your own financial constraints. I understand that. And I appreciate what you said and it makes sense to me. I have another question too. We're talking about a fire lighter here. My wife and I went to Richmond a few nights ago. When we came home, smoke detector was going off. That smoke in covered monoxide. And what else was it? Oh, we had two in the, one, one was a smoke detector, the other was covered in oxide. Both of those were going off. That's kind of scary. And I said, I said, I don't know how this could be because the furnace isn't running, of course, warm. We have a water heater that's an instant water heater. It doesn't fire unless you, you know, need water. So it didn't make sense to me, but I still wanted to feel okay with it. So I called the fire department. Forty-eight minutes later, they got there. They could have walked in with a handheld sniffer to see if there was any fumes, gas, whatever. I know about these things. They brought a EMS truck, one of the big, not a tanker, but one of the big fire trucks. And I think another vehicle. And two guys came in with a handheld sniffer, checked things out. They said, well, just a, a fluke. Both of them went out at the same time. Now, I essentially replaced both of those, but 48 minute delay and bring three pieces of equipment. And then one in another levy. I mean, jeez, you know, I mean, I don't understand that. Can you shed any light on that about why? I mean, I see a little, little fender bender accident. I see a ladder truck there. I mean, what, what is that about?
I can't speak intelligently on how the fire department does their operations and what pieces of equipment they need for each one. It would be unfair for me to answer for them because I would be unfair for them to answer for me.
But do you think it's an unfair question to ask?
I don't think it's an unfair question to ask. I'm just not the guy to answer the question.
Well, the answer to your question on theft groups, there were two.
On the what?
The thefts. I know who's with your neighbor's tools. I know where they're at. Not the tools, but I know where the people are. We had two separate groups working from the first through the year. Actually, since.
Are they incarcerated? Is that what you're telling?
Some are, some aren't. Once we're off camera, I'll be more than happy to fill you in on who is where. But I can tell you that the one group is no longer, two of them are in the state of Ohio. The rest are out of state.
Just to enlighten you a little bit on, on the county dispatch, the reason that happened some years ago, they basically came to us. And they wanted everybody on the same system. That's why we were on Inglewood. So we switched. That's why we switched. And that's, so now, yeah, it's a bad scenario down the road here. Well, or, or not as good, but that was the reason for it. At the time, like, everybody's going to be on the same dispatch. Everybody's going to know what's going on. Hey, this sounds great. Well, sometimes things don't always. So I, I guess, I, I guess it was a bad decision. But it seemed like a good one at the time because what they were presenting to us. I mean, they basically come to us.
I heard that they, they approached them and I heard that they pretty much just showed up and dropped the equipment off.
That's.
And, and that was it.
Like you say, the, you just, I can't remember the, the, the radio. It's just a matter of changing the frequencies in there and stuff. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what's all.
Well, I think when you're talking about 911, it's not about the expense. It's about the expediency of getting people there. And, you know, how many 911 calls do you really get? And are they all based on emergency? So then you probably have no way of knowing if you're an emergency or not. But the thing is, it's about expediency from the time the call is made to the time someone shows up. That's the important thing. And I don't give a damn if it's 1250 or $7 or whatever. It's still very important that in an expedient manner, somebody show up to find out what's going on. So.
I agree. And then if you have, if you have multiple people calling in on 911, let's say, for example, you got one in Pearmont and one, let's say over here at Diamond Mill at Old Dayton. What is that? Bovles? So let's, let's pick Bovles for a second and let's pick Longhorn Fab Shop. They're two businesses that everybody knows where they're at. If my officer is down in Lower Richmond out by your house and they get a 911 call to Longhorn Fab Shop. Well, let's say they're on their way there, but then all of a sudden somebody from Bovles calls in. Two different completely, you know, scenarios. The 911 call evaluator is gathering that information and then based upon their guidelines and the information that they obtained, they have to make a decision which one has more of an emergency over the other. Let's say somebody broke into Longhorn Fab Shop. But let's say you got somebody that's not breathing over here at Bovles. The person at Bovles isn't breathing is going to get the attention before Longhorn Fab Shop does. Those were two examples. So if I got one officer on, they're going to the person not breathing. So you may have to wait if you're at Longhorn Fab Shop. You may have to wait a little bit longer for my officer to get there.
So it's actually a discretion of dispatcher or the officer?
I don't, I I don't, I don't have it so much in the discretion. I think it's that they look at everything and the information that they're being given that they're asking.
Does that, does that dispatcher say to the officer, we got somebody not breathing and we got to break in over here? Make your mind up what you want to do. Or do they say it's more important to go here than there? Does the dispatcher do that? Is that their job or?
That is their job based upon their guidelines and the stuff that they have received from, from their agency.
I might be able to help with that a little bit. Our regional dispatch, Montgomery County at least, I'm, I'm not sure with Inglewood. I'm not real familiar with them. But I'm very familiar with Montgomery County Regional Dispatch. They have what's called a CAD system, computer-aided dispatch, and it's very similar to what the officers have in the cars. When they get a call type, they type it into their CAD system. And there are certain keywords and certain typing constructs that the computer recognizes. And there's an algorithm where it will assign it a priority code. One's a priority one, one's a priority two. There's code words like the officers can say, I need something on a hurry up. That means bulk me up in the priority list. There, the dispatchers sometimes are at the mercy of that computer because they've typed in burglary, theft, whatever. Officer car three is being sent to burglary theft Longhorn Fab Shop. But the address, this other call comes in and they type in, I've received a call not breathing. And keep in mind, I think there's 12 dispatchers sitting around regional at any time. So there's a bunch of them typing to the system all at the same time. Somebody answers a call. Jason could be sending the person to the theft on Longhorn Fab Shop. I answer the call for the not breathing person on the other side of the township. I type that into my computer and it bumps the call on his computer. So then the dispatcher sees where they're sending their officer. The dispatchers, sometimes if they're good and they know what's going on around them and they can listen in on everything, they may be able to get more information and bump it up in a priority. But a lot of times that's done by the computer because it's got keywords like burglary versus not breathing. And it automatically trumps the previous call.
One other question, Tim. I know that you're fair and I'm a fair officer. One of your officers recently asked a man sarcastically, are you a baby killer? And you heard it. Was that man ever disciplined in any way? Did you ever corner him and tell him that you're never supposed to speak to somebody like that? It's not a very good representation for you or this outfit.
Correct. That is something that is being dealt with in him.
I'd like to know the outcome of that.
I can let you know that, sir.
I appreciate it.
Anybody else?
Oh, I have a plethora of things, but I'm not going to bring them out now, excuse me.
No one has anything else, then I will make a motion adjourned.
Second.
Trustee Hartford?
Yes.
Trustee Wynn?
Yes.
Trustee Morris?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.